All right, I will call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Denise, I would like to add that we held an executive session, one on March 27th, and another one on April 13th for personnel matters. Next on the agenda, Commissioner Evans, do we have any opening comments?
Thank you, yes, I have a couple. Welcome, everyone, thank you for joining us, we're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding the agenda item will be entertained under Citizens to Be Heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. This isn't part of my opening, but I almost never chew gum, and my wife asked me if I wanted a piece of gum, so I said yeah, and now I can't talk while I am. Open for business, yes, Cowan is open for business. Another successful small biz is coming to Cowan. Precision Eye Care will be leaving their longtime main office in Downingtown and relocating to new offices in Cowan sometime in May. Precision also has an office on Gay Street in Westchester. Dr. Jessica Yanelli saw opportunity here and bought the old animal hospital between the Taco Bell and Royal Farms on Manor Avenue. They've done a great job reimagining the exterior, can't wait to see the inside. And thanks to Dr. Yanelli, you know I'm gonna say it, I'll be able to see the inside. Last Saturday was Riparian Buffer Tree Maintenance Day. Abby Swan organized and led a wonderful group of volunteers to take care of the 800-plus trees planted at Lloyd and Municipal Park over the last couple of years. We straightened tree tubes, secured support poles, pulled weeds, replaced a few dead trees where needed, and had a lot of fun working together outside on a beautiful day. The group included township residents as well as non-resident dog park users, which was pretty cool to see. Of course, Parks and Rec Committee were out in full force, as well as township employees and historical commission members, thank you, Abby. Building bridges, as you may have noticed, the crumbling municipal bridge has been removed, and heavy equipment is preparing the area for the arrival of our new municipal drive bridge. At this week's PSATs conference in Hershey, I was introduced to Ankeeta Patel from Contact, Contact, I believe, is the bridge builder. And from our conversation, I can tell you, they're as excited as we are to get to the finish line, and we are getting close. Help wanted. The Parks and Rec Commission is one of our most important and hardest-working volunteer commissions. Without them, there's no... I had like 3,000 "there's no, there's no, there's no" in my draft. That's that inside joke. Without them, there's no summer movie series, no summer concerts, no fireworks, no Halloween parade, holiday decorations contests, holiday tree lighting, county community day, tree planting and maintenance events, you get it. They do everything, and they need our help. Please, consider joining them for their monthly meeting this Monday night. One meeting, and I promise, you'll be hooked. Big weekend to kick off May coming up. Our first movie night of the year will be Friday, May 5th at Municipal Park. Come on out to see our feature film, Hook. The fun starts at 8:00 p.m., and that's not all. On Saturday, May 6th, the Old County Historical Commission will hold their annual Antique Craft and Flea Market fundraiser right here, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the winner is... Well, we don't know the winner yet, but big news to share. The Chester County Historical Preservation Network has nominated Cowan Township for their Municipality Award for our work at Spackman Farm in 2022. Whoa. Their recognition of us would not be possible if it were not for the hard work and determination of our Historical Commission, Parks and Recs, Old County Historical Society, and Public Works Department, making sure our November Spackman Farm event was a success. The awards dinner is in June in Hibernia Park, fingers crossed, and then, of course, you all know, July 20th, we will be hosting one of only eight Chester County town tours, right there at Spackman Farm. Lastly, spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentments are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go around, and these are the greatest gifts any of us can give or receive.
Commissioner Evans?
All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, next on the agenda, Citizens to Be Heard. Have any here in the township building? I do not see any hands raised at this time. Abby? All right, moving right along, Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp.
Thank you, the first thing under my report is a consideration of a motion for preliminary slash final land development approval for ESC Development LLC, a child daycare center located at 100 Rock Raymond Road. The board previously issued a conditional use approval in an order dated January 26, 2023, to allow the daycare use, that's the zoning approval. This is now the more specific detailed land development. Property is 3.5 acres, it's on the west side of Rock Raymond Road, north of Horseshoe Pike. There will be an 11,900-square-foot, one-story building to be used as a child daycare center. Two outdoor play areas, one is 3,000 square feet, and the other is 1,000 square feet. There'll be 48 parking spaces and an access driveway that leads from the existing shared private road that connects Horseshoe Pike or Manor Avenue to Rock Raymond Road. I have circulated a draft motion for the board's consideration. The proposed draft motion would have the board grant preliminary slash final approval of the plan, subject to the following conditions. The development on the plan has to comply with all terms of the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and the stormwater ordinance, unless this particular order grants a waiver. And there are certain waivers that they have requested, which I will go over in the next conditions. The applicant has to comply with all terms in the conditional use decision in order. One of the things in the conditional use decision in order, if you recall, the applicant was asked to put sidewalk along Rock Raymond Road. And the concern at the time, and there was testimony from Joe Rosella, who was the applicant's engineer, they were concerned about the transmission pipeline that runs parallel to Rock Raymond Road. And the way the conditional use order was written was that they needed to seek consent from that transmission pipeline to be able to put the sidewalk, as well as light fixtures. TC Energy is actually the current owner of that transmission pipeline, and there was communication that the applicant's engineer provided to the township and the township engineer that indicated that TC Energy would not allow the installation of any sidewalk or lighting within their easement area. So, the way the conditional use order was written is now how this order is written, that because of TC Energy's reluctance or prohibition of letting the sidewalk, the applicant must pay a fee in lieu of sidewalk in the amount of $11,268. $11,268, they must grant an easement to either the township or PennDOT to allow a future extension of the sidewalk along the entire property frontage in the event something would change in the future, that the transmission line would be removed or they would change their position. They also must tender a deed of dedication for the sidewalk easement prior to release of the plan for recording. So that's sidewalk discussion. Once I go through all this, if you have questions about that, the applicant and their engineer are here, can review that with you. There are waivers, and this particular decision grants waivers to allow the plan to be approved as preliminary final. It does not require the sidewalk along Rock Raymond, as I've just explained. There are two stormwater ordinance waivers. One is to allow the storm drain pipes to have a minimum pipe diameter of 15 inches, as opposed to 18 inches. And the second is to allow a certain type of erosion control spillway lining, as opposed to concrete grass pavers. The township engineer did not express any concern about those waivers. Actually, there's a third one from stormwater, and that's to install a level spreader at the basin outfall instead of a concrete end wall and riprap apron. And again, your township engineer did not express concerns about those particular waivers. The next conditions are compliance with any comments in the consultant review letters, provide public sewer to the daycare center, obtain Act 537 Sewer Facility Planning Module or an exemption of that, basically comply with anything the CTMA requires for sewer, pay $10,251.45 as a fee in lieu of land for open space, execute the form developer agreements, financial security agreements, and post-financial security in the amount determined necessarily by the township, reimburse the township any outstanding legal fees or engineering consultant fees, provide the township with a digital copy of the plan, record the plans, and that's it. So that's the proposed motion. As I mentioned, the applicant's counsel, the applicant himself and their engineers here, if you have any specific questions on the development. Ray is participating virtually, so Mr. Lowell Lehman, the township engineer, is also here in case there's any questions on the plan.
Abby, can you promote me on here? Sorry. Analyst.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
Yeah, Lowell was on the earlier one.
Thank you.
Josh, any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
So, I guess that the applicant is in agreement with all the fee waivers in lieu of the sidewalks and the lighting, and some of the conditions with the stormwater waivers and the level spreader, or are they in agreement with those conditions?
Yeah, I mean, I have provided a copy, as I always do, of the draft motion to the applicant's counsel. She's here before you, I think they're comfortable with these conditions.
We are, good evening, Deborah Scholsky with the firm of Riley, Wyper, Hanukkah, Greco, who are helping out for the applicant, and yes, as Kristen indicated, we did have the benefit of seeing the draft, and all the conditions set forth in the draft resolution are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will make one comment. I drove by along Rock Raymond, and where the TC Energy spot is, to me, it's a safety hazard even to have kids walking along that side. So to put a sidewalk there, I think would not be a good idea to begin with. So, I'm fine with actually waiving that part in lieu of... And, you know, like you mentioned, Ms. Camp, that maybe down the road, if they ever move that little power section? That would be fine, but yeah, I think it's just a danger for the kids, anyway.
You think, will it be enclosed?
It is enclosed, yeah, it's gated.
I should have looked before I asked.
Kids just climbing up on it, yeah. So, yeah, to have a walkway just straight to that section, I think it would be a smart move not to do.
Okay, if there's no other questions, it'd be appropriate for somebody to make a motion.
Entertain a motion.
Okay.
Oh, yes, no? Yes, we can take questions, yes. I saw Tom's name up there. Tom?
Hello, Tom Parr, 582 Lloyd Avenue. Is part of the condition still, six months down the road, gonna do a traffic study?
That is a condition from the conditional use approval, so yes, the applicant would still be bound by that.
Yeah, so the zoning approval, all of those conditions still apply. Those run with the land and run with the use. So none of that is being changed through this order, and in fact, this order, you know, belts and suspenders reminds the applicant that they must comply with all of those terms and conditions.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Parr.
Thank you, Tom.
Yippee.
Entertain a motion to approve. Oh, we have a second question? Tony's not here, he's online?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. How are you? Tony Wagner, 207 Thorn Ridge Drive. Are the results of the study that the gentleman just raised going to affect the vote of the commissioners? Or is it just a formality?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
He just raised a question about the traffic studies. You guys-
Right, and the traffic study is required by the conditional use order?
Absolutely, yes. So, is that going to affect the vote of the commissioners, or is that just a formality?
It's actually, hi, Tony, this is Mark. We had concern about what that intersection at Lloyd and Manor were going to look like six months down the road after they were open and more traffic was being generated. So, it doesn't affect the conditional, it doesn't affect the approval tonight, but it's something to be revisited to make sure that it's safe and any measures that need to be taken can be.
Right, let me read the condition. So it's Condition 14 of the conditional use approval. It states that six months after the daycare is open, applicant must conduct a traffic analysis of the traffic signal at the intersection of the shared driveway and Manor Avenue across from Lloyd Avenue to determine if the signal must be retimed. If the study recommends that the signal must be retimed, applicant has to obtain all necessary approvals to permit the retiming, and they must pay to implement the retiming within three months of obtaining approvals. So we will document when the daycare is opened, when there's a certificate of use occupancy issued. Six months from that date, the applicant will be asked to complete a traffic study. The township's traffic engineer will review that traffic study and analyze whether the timing of the signal should be changed. If so, an application has to be submitted to PennDOT for approval of that. If and when PennDOT approves the signal retiming, the applicant will pay the cost to do so. So that remains a condition, and that will be enforced by the township.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tony. No others? No other questions?
Excuse me, yes, so after all these conditions are met, and even though we're gonna make a motion, even before they can get their U and O, everything would have to be in compliance with every condition that we've outlined and agreed upon.
That's correct, yep.
Once again, I will ask, can I get a motion to accept?
Set moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you, so five to zero, thank you. Thanks, Debbie, thank you.
Denise, you got that, five to zero? Thank you so much.
The second thing is a continuation. At the last meeting, the board considered approving numerous easements that we obtained. Your staff and your air engineering and myself worked on properties along Reed Street and Oak Street for the stormwater drainage and the sanitary sewer project. I am happy to report that these last three easements we obtained after the last meeting, and so now they're just to authorize the president to execute the easements that are listed on the agenda, 1411 Reed Street, 1521 Reed Street, and 1401 Reed Street.
Commissioners, any questions? Residents, anybody here in the township building, questions? I know hands raised, nothing in Zoom world. Entertain a motion to authorize the president to sign the easement agreements as listed below. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion's good, five to zero.
Thank you, so I think pretty soon you'll see a bid, a request for authorization to bid that project and move it forward, so a lot of hard work went into that, we're excited to see that happen. So that's it, and I have nothing further for tonight.
All right, thank you. Ms. Camp, have a great evening. Township manager, Ms. Denny, isn't able to attend this evening, but she did ask the, what do you call it, the DII inventory? And this was for, what projects? I had it up on my iPad earlier. Abby? She was, actually, she was just asking if the board had any other road projects that needed to be added to the list. Apparently, there's 14 or 16 already. Commissioners, any additions or that we might want to present? Or we can just send it over to Ms. Denny's? Well, I think she needs to file it soon, right?
Yeah, Adam's saying yes.
Oh, okay. Well, let's just put it like this, if there's any other streets that need attention, I also believe part of the trail was on that list, and some other items, yeah.
Well, I've just pulled it up, if you, let me see if I can find it real quick, and I can read. You want me to read what's on there?
Yeah, if you could, yeah, just give everyone an idea.
So it's US 30 bypass, Resville to Quarry Road, State Route 30, and Airport Road interchange improvements, Septa Paoli, Thordale Line Extension, Chester Valley Extension to Downingtown, Chester Valley Trail West, Lloyd Road over Beaver Creek, Geo Carlson Boulevard over Beaver Run, Fisherville Road over Beaver Run Tributary, Resville Road, US bypass to East Fisherville Road, or East Resville Road, I'm sorry, Hazelwood Avenue, Moore Road, US 30 bypass to Kings Highway, 340 at Business 30, US 30, PA 340, Resville Road, Lincoln Highway, North Callan, Olive Street, North Callan Road and Black Horse Hill Road, and Black Horse Hill Road at Moore Road. And some of them are new bridge, rehab, turning lanes, drainage, turn signal, realign lanes, there's multi, and trails.
Okay, yeah, it's just a list of upgrades that the township might be interested in. And I believe some of those items, if not most, have been on that list for a little bit of time.
Decades, some of them.
Decades, okay, there you go.
So, and it's the transportation improvement inventory.
DII, okay. Well, commissioners, if there's any other intersections or roads that residents are asking to have upgraded, we can pass that along to Ms. Denny. Next on the agenda, Township Engineer. Carl, how are you?
You're in, Commissioners? Township staff. Carl Schmidt with Arrow, and we have eight items on the agenda. Item number one, consideration for a motion to approve a 90-day extension. This is up until July, this is for custer excavation, specific to the conveyance improvements at Park Drive. This extension is requested due to primarily an easement that we had to engage a resident on. That took some time. Ended up, we don't need the easement after all, but it did gobble up some time, and due to the dates on the agreement, we needed to request an extension.
And there's no additional cost?
Yes, no cost, thank you.
And there'll be no FEMA will not be affected by this?
No, no impact, the FEMA projects all were extended. This one for Park Drive turns out to be, this is one of the very few that's not on Ida. Okay.
Commissioners, any questions on this? If not, I will ask residents. No hands raised here. All right, entertain a motion to approve the 90-day extension.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner, Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five to zero, next.
Thank you, item two, consideration for a motion to approve payment application number one to more construction services in the amount of $3,735. This is for South Lloyd Avenue Stream Bank Restoration Project. Project just started, they had removed some trees a little while ago, so this payment was specific to that activity.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Residents, any questions? None at this time. Entertain a motion to approve payment application number one to more construction services in the amount of $3,735.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five to zero.
Thank you. Item three, consideration to approve payment application number two for more construction. This is in the amount of $162,337.50. This is for the North Barley Sheath Culvert Reconstruction Project. This is payment application number two. When you add what was approved already in payment one to this payment two, it equates to about 85% of the project. Project is completed, 15% remains in retainage.
Apparently, more wants more. Get that more? Okay, all right, more wants more.
Pretending I didn't get.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Residents, is that a hand raised? Yes, Tony?
Tony Wagner, 207 Thorn Ridge Drive, what was that project?
This is the North Barley Sheath Culvert Reconstruction Project.
Specifically, that's a generic phrase. You're spending 85% of the payment on this, on this payment?
Oh, this is payment number two. When you combine the previous approved payment one with this payment number two, that equated to 85% of the budget being spent.
What was completed for that 85% of that project?
The project is completed, there was restoration of an existing corrugated metal pipe that was underground. There was a end wall and a head wall. The corrugated metal pipe was removed and replaced with a reinforced concrete pipe. Then, at the low point, the existing channel was reconstructed and relined with riprap.
Thank you.
Sure, and thank you, Tony. All right, no other questions, I can, I will entertain a motion to approve payment application number two to more construction services in the amount of $162,337.50 for North Bailey Sheath Culvert Reconstruction Project.
So moved.
Moved, moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five to zero.
Thank you, item four, request for consideration to approve payment application number three to Brightfields in the amount of $18,572.50. This is for the Pump House Demolition Project at the golf course. The project is complete, this is payment item three. When you combine items, the previously approved app one and two with this one, it's 95% of the budget, you have 5% in retainage still.
Commissioners, any questions on that?
No.
Residents, any questions? You got somebody? Mark DeYoung, welcome.
Welcome, hello, everybody. This is just an overall question about all the projects that we're doing due to Ida. Back when we first started, we weren't, you know, we were told that we weren't gonna be able to get any extensions. So now it seems like we're getting extensions for everything, which is what I thought from the first place. And I just want to be sure that that, is that statement true? Are we now able to get extensions until we complete all these projects and get reimbursed from Ida? Or from FEMA, I'm sorry, for Ida.
Yeah, Ray, you want to take that one? Is that on?
How about that? So, we actually never said that we couldn't get extensions. What we said was there was a process, and FEMA had told us all along that the projects had to be done by the March date. We formally filed for an extension for all seven Ida projects prior to that, that date expiring, and all those extensions were approved through the end of August.
Okay, that's great, thank you, Ray.
Any other questions there, Mark?
No, just thank you, glad to hear it.
All right, thanks, Mark. So if there's no other questions, entertain a motion to approve payment application number three to Brightfields. in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents for the Golf Course Pump House Demolition Project.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's good five zero. Move right along.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item five, request for consideration to approve payment recommendation number three. This is for Construction Masters Services in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. This is for the Moore Road Bridge Replacement Project. Uh, this is, um, payment, uh, request three. When you combine the two previously approved payment apps with this one, it equates to about fifty percent of the, uh, budget spent. Uh, they are well beyond the fifty percent, uh, range on the work. Uh, they're probably in the ninety percent range, um, planning to pave next week and a week thereafter, the project will be done.
Great news.
Yes.
Hey, Commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
All right, residents? None here in the township? Nope. All right, entertain a motion to approve payment recommendation number three to Construction Masters in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine and fifty cents for the Moore Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion's good five zero.
Okay, thank you, item six. Uh, this is, uh, to, uh, consider a motion to request, uh, the bid on your twenty twenty-three, uh, road program on Penn Dot. This is, um, an annual activity. Uh, the, um, program has identified the roads, uh, and we're settling in, uh, to go out and bid now.
Did we skip one with the Public Works Maintenance?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, um, I have that.
Actually, I'm the one that skips.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I have it as number eight on my list, so, uh, public wor, uh, let's go back to the, uh, last payment request. Uh, this is a request to consideration to approve payment recommendation number one to AK Petersheim Builders.
Yes.
This is in the amount of thirty-six thousand, uh, eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents. This is for the replacement of the roof at the Public Works Maintenance Shop. Uh, this is, um, the project's done, uh, just in time for all the rain, no more leaks on the roof.
Is it still leaking?
No. Did a good job, this is, uh, payment app one, you have, uh, ten percent of retainage, uh, even though the, the project is completed.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
No, residents? Pretty simple, all right. Entertain a motion to approve payment recommendation number one to AK Petersheim Builders.
Second.
So moved.
Did you move?
No.
She just jumped to the second, I'm, I'll throw you in there, so Commissioner Kennedy motioned and and Commissioner Tindaro second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're ahead of ourselves here. All right, now you can go to the Penn Bid.
Thank you, that's the end of the pay app request. Uh, now it's back to a request to bid the twenty twenty-three road program. I can answer any questions.
Can you list the roads that would be considered as part of this?
Yes. Uh, what we have on the list, uh, right now is, um, uh, four roads, Fifteenth Avenue, Sixteenth Avenue, Seventeenth Avenue, and Oak Street, portions of those roads. Uh, and then there's a, uh, s- small amount for maintenance, continued maintenance and protection of traffic.
And then did we, are we also adding as an alternate the municipal park, parking lot?
Yes, sir, that's correct, we, uh, we got the information to you late today, I do apologize for that. Um, we, we did add that, and we, if you were interested, we would do that as an al, a bid alternate.
That parking lot is in bad shape, and has been for a long time.
That parking lot is in very bad shape.
Yeah.
Um, I will say, I mean, the probable cost that, that, that we receive from Arrow for the, for the road program, uh, and again, this is just estimate, is about three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, we have budgeted, uh, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, and then the, and that obviously is out of liquid fuels. The probable cost, opinion of probable cost for the parking lot, uh, for the park is about sixty-nine thousand dollars. And obviously, the, the downside to that is, I mean, that can't come out of liquid fuels. So I'm not, you know, we would have to figure out how to fund that. But it is, it is in very bad shape.
How about the, uh, the walkway, the trails, from the parking lot down to the playground area?
We did not, we did not include those, because there's a lot of other things to take into consideration. If that's something the board wants to talk about moving forward, that's something we could have an evaluation and a discussion on for, for next year, but there's a lot of other things, you know, ADA and some other things, we probably should take into consideration for those.
I don't know what kind of shape it's in, I didn't think it was.
Not.
The walkway is not.
Oh.
Yeah, just stand up.
No, no, I know what you mean, I, I'm just talking, that walkway, I figured if you're there and you're doing the, the drive, or the parking lot area. The walkway going back towards where the kids play, you know, I don't know what kind of shape it's in, I, you know, during Community Day, I wasn't looking down. But I didn't trip, so. All right, um, well, including the, uh, ballpark, uh, parking lot. Authorizer, or, any questions from Commissioners? I should go that route first. Any questions from residents? None at this time, okay, entertain, uh, a motion to authorize to advertise bid for the road, uh, twenty twenty-three road program.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion's good five zero. And the last one?
Thank you, last item, uh, uh, Ms. Camp did just touch on this, uh, she ended her presentation with, uh, you'll be hearing about the Reed Street bid next, and here it is, this is a request to bid the Reed Street Drainage Improvement Project. I can answer any questions on that?
There's any, any questions? Is that coinciding with the sewer section of this?
Yes. There's, uh, one easement that has, uh, both the sewer line and, uh, storm water. And that was on, uh, last week's list, uh, that was approved for that residence, so, um, yeah, there's a stormwater pipe and then one sewer line.
Yeah, it's a good time to do it both at the same time.
Yes.
Yeah. So no questions from Commissioners? Any questions from residents? None at this time. Entertain a motion, authorize the bid, uh, advertise for the bid, uh, for the Reed Street Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion's good five zero, Carl, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hope you had a good time at Peace Ads. I saw you out there. Yes, I did. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Uh, request for consideration to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven approving the disposition, how do you say that, disposition? I want to say dispose. Disposition of Township Records. I know we have a list somewhere here. The older version, uh, the first items were twenty fifteen and prior miscellaneous permits, twenty twenty pavilion rentals, and if somebody had the third item. Forgot to print it out. That's what it was. It, was it a certain year of building, or? Okay, two thou, two thousand and fifteen and prior, uh, insurance certificates.
Well, we only require by law to keep them for seven years, correct? Is that correct? Do we, do we have to keep them for like, a period of seven years?
Uh, they are all digital at this point? Okay. I mean, they're. Okay. And but, but they are saved digitally? I mean, I don't know if it's that urgent to have something like this. Oh, really? Oh. Okay, I, I didn't know if, yeah, if they were that important, that needed to be saved forever, but, okay. Pavilion rentals. I just wonder who rented.
We could send them to your house.
Where they are.
Give you the whole box.
Yeah, you know, the sad thing is, I, I still have boxes of, of business files from like nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen nine, yeah, I'm terrible that way.
On fire.
Just can't let go, I guess. All right, uh, Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Not, yeah, I'll ask the residents. Doesn't see, uh, no hands raised? Entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Josh? Okay. Fortunately, we'll just go four.
Four.
Four zero. Next on the agenda, consider to approve, uh, April thirteenth, Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. Commissioners, any additions, corrections needed?
No.
If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good four zero. Next, acknowledgement of minutes, uh, consideration to acknowledge Board receipt of March twenty-first Planning Committee, or Planning Commission Meeting Minutes, say that five times fast. Commissioners, any questions, if not, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
I moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One four zero on that? All right, moving right along, Finance Department, Financial Report. Ms. Swan, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great, how about yourself?
Unbelievable.
Fantastic, on the upswing, right?
On the upswing.
Uh, so our, uh, financial report is in your packet, and March is not too exciting, so I'm going to go right to April. Um, tax bills are out, and, uh, with revenue versus expenses, we're at about twenty-three percent, um, of our twenty twenty-three budget expended, which is fantastic. Um, four of our five leases will be finishing up this year, which is always nice to see. Those leases close out, uh, we'll, we'll have two active ones, which will finish up in twenty twenty-four. With that being said, we are at, uh, forty-nine percent of our revenues collected, and our real estate tax revenues were at eighty-eight percent, the big ones, the big three came in the last two days.
Oh, wow.
That's always nice to see, um, things running smoothly, we're still working on, um, audits for pension, unemployment, uh, township, and there's two more, they're all kind of piled up in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's all I have for tonight.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Hey, residents, any questions on the financials? Nothing?
Checks.
Thank you, Elizabeth, you're doing such a great job.
Thank you.
We have, uh, for approval, uh, check run forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight to fifty thousand and twenty-five, and a manual check of two ninety, number two ninety. Commissioners?
I have to recuse on check number five zero zero one zero. That was a reimbursement for the PA sheriff, the historical commission.
Good, Commissioners, any other questions on? Not, entertain a motion to, uh, approve check run.
Moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
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 Going four zero? Josh is okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, meat and potatoes. All right, well, Director's Reports, we'll start off with Police Chief Elias.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Beginning next week, May first, and going through May the twelfth, contractors from Pennsylvania American Water uh, will be in the township going door to door, collecting responses to a survey that they had previously sent out. If residents haven't completed the survey online, um, they're going to be going to the house and you, I'm not the water guy, but, uh, I mention this because we are in the spring driveway and home improvement scam season. Uh, and every year around this time, we remind residents to be cautious. Um, so I, I wanted to mention, this is a legitimate project, there's no solicitor's permit required from the Police Department, all the contractors will be wearing logoed high visibility vests and carrying official photo ID badges, and if residents want any additional information, uh, they could visit our Facebook page, uh, and there's a video, uh, explaining all of this. Just wanted to mention that. I don't have anything else, unless you have any questions of me.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah. Questions.
Keeping our streets safe, appreciate that, trying our best, and quiet.
Don't say it. Don't say it.
Yeah. Josh, any questions for the chief?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Again.
Oh, we have a hand raised.
Thank you to you and all of your, all your staff.
Thank you.
Tony, you there?
Hey, Police Chief, I appreciate your, uh, service to the community. Uh, with all the new communities being built in and around Callan, uh, any concerns financially, staffing wise in regards to your, uh, your needs to serve the community? That can be addressed by the Commissioners?
Any, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Tony, what was?
Yeah, there's a large number of communities being built in and around Callan. Uh, I'm concerned about what are your needs for staffing, funding to serve the community, the expanding community? Are they being addressed by the Commissioners, or?
Yes, uh, right now, we have, um, three, uh, cadets who are, are in the academy, uh, and one beginning in July. All of their tuition costs are going to be reimbursed by the state, and forty-five percent of the salary that they earn while they're in the academy will also be reimbursed, so knock on wood, hopefully by the end of this year, we should be back to full complement. Um, we realize the township is growing, um, which is a good thing, but we also realize that that will place a can, a demand on, on services, so in the future, yes, um, there will be ongoing discussions with the manager and the board as far as uh, needs go, not just for the Police Department, but I, I would imagine all, all Township departments, so that we could continue to provide
Absolutely, fire. What do you, what do you ex, what do you expect as far as future needs beyond this year? Based on the developments, I see four hundred plus units going on at three twenty-two, plus Lloyd Farm is three, two hundred plus units.
Lloyd Farms, two hundred plus units, what's that?
Not aware of that one.
I'm sorry, Tony, what was, you said Lloyd Farm, two hundred plus units, what is that?
I may have misspoken, I mean, there's a development going in on Lloyd Farm, that I understand, but.
No.
Nothing's been approved.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing's approved, nothing been approved, okay.
Haven't heard of it.
Okay, so the four, the four hundred units on three twenty-two.
Right. Mm-hmm, right, and then I think another eighty-some on Lincoln Highway.
And the low-end housing on three, on thirty as well, yeah, so.
Right. So in fairness to the board and the manager who's not here, I really haven't had a chance to discuss with them, uh, what the potential future needs of the department are, so I probably shouldn't comment on it publicly until we've had.
Yeah, no worries.
An opportunity to discuss it internally, but we, with, it's, it's a good point, there, there is going to be an increased demand with, with an increased number of residents and businesses in the township.
Absolutely. I know the, the, uh, board will support you in those efforts.
Oh, yeah.
They've been very supportive.
Absolutely.
Yep. All right, Tony, good questions, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, misspoke.
Real quick. Oh, that's right. Ray, the, the timeline on, on both of the, on, uh.
My place in Willows?
Yeah. Thank you.
It is mine.
Yeah.
Um, my, my place anticipates looking for, uh, their first U N Os probably in August. They, at this point, uh, roughly, they probably have, or they could have by August, they probably could have fifty town homes ready for use and occupancy. And, you know, quickly behind that, uh, they probably could have two apartment buildings ready for, you know, for occupancy. So, I mean, it's really hard to, to gauge that. I think once they start and we see how quickly they occupy those units, we'd be able to get a better, a better feel for how, you know, how many. But, uh, if the housing market, uh, stays the way it is now, especially, you gotta remember, all these are gonna be a hundred percent rental. Uh, my anticipation would be that, you know, they'll start filling as quickly as they can have them ready for occupancy.
Are they still geared up, uh, to do the sewer pipe along three twenty-two in June, is it?
I'm not sure I'm ready to.
Oh, you can't comment on that at the time? Don't wanna promise the world, I understand.
That, that, uh.
After school, though.
Yeah, it's definitely after school, they definitely have had meetings with both Pendot and Pico, and they still are obligated to give us thirty-day notice when that roadway will be closed down. And when they do that, they'll give us a full traffic, uh, diversion plan and a schedule and all that. And soon as they, soon as I have it in hand this time, and it's, I know it's signed off by all parties, we will, uh, we will disseminate that to the public, but my guess is it will be very soon after, uh, school is out.
Okay.
And we're looking at at least a year before Willows.
No.
No, they're moving fast.
No, the first apartment building is getting rough inspections now. The second apartment building is almost under roof. So, no, I, my guess is we'll be seeing use and occupancy in there in the second quarter or third quarter, probably at the latest.
Oh, yeah, they got two buildings.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I should say third quarter, 'cause we're almost in the second quarter.
Yeah.
But probably early fall.
Yeah.
All right, so next on the agenda, uh, Fire Department Chief Taylor, Patrick. Welcome.
Evening.
Hello.
All right. Um, so I'll kinda start, uh, the report, little bit of a somber news, uh, many probably have seen on Facebook this past Monday, uh, evening, there was a pretty significant house fire, uh, that occurred, uh, yeah, occurred on West Morgan Drive. Luckily, no civilian or firefighter injuries, um, and we did, uh, the firefighters, N E O S there that responded, uh, were able to, uh, save two cats and a dog, I believe the resident's still looking for a cat, so please keep your eye out. But I do wanna, did wanna report on that. Uh, the other thing, uh, that kinda goes along with what we were just talking about with the three twenty-two closure, unfortunately, we can't give thirty days' notice and we have to close a road for an emergency scene. Um, and I feel bad, 'cause a lot of our fire police officers who do close the roadway are getting screamed at and things like that. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do for a road closure, I apologize, it's a huge inconvenience, uh, but for the safety of all responders and the incident and everything like that, it's just, sometimes it's necessary. Um, I do appreciate Chief Elias and your staff, uh, also assisting, uh, with some of those, uh, but I do apologize, like I said, it's not our intention to close roads, and I know sometimes roads we close put traffic through neighborhoods, it's unfortunately just something we have to do. So, um, in better news, I'm happy to report, uh, and again, that April eighteenth, uh, the company celebrated its eighty-fourth year of service. So, uh, nineteen thirty-eight is when Thorndale Fire Company was formed, and then we were officially chartered April eighteenth, nineteen thirty-nine. So, we're hoping to be around for another eighty-four-plus years, uh, serving the great Callan community. So, and that's all I have, unless you have any questions about my report.
Great news.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions on the report?
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much. Hey, Ray, you get the floor, Director of Building Life and Safety and Public Works.
Uh, commissioners, we, uh, from a commercial building perspective, uh, Chipotle and Starbucks both, uh, which is thirty-two oh three and thirty-two nineteen Lincoln Highway respectively, have submitted building permits, so they're under review. They won't be able to be released until, you know, that phase-two land development's completed, but, you already, we already spoke about the residential projects that are going on. A new commercial project that, uh, will be coming to the commissioners soon is twenty-seven fifty-one Lincoln Highway. That's the site of the old U S Supply, you may have, if you rode by recently, seen the, that building was demoed down to the pad site. So, um, that's a long time coming, we had worked with the previous owner, and when I say worked, unfortunately, I mean cited and argued with to try to clean up that building. Uh, luckily, if nothing else, we, we got the building, uh, to be removed.
Great job.
But that's, that's an anticipated, uh, subdivision and land development project by Kia. So they're, they wanna subdivide that parcel, uh, do a building project in the back, and for now, leave that pad site open for, for potential fu- fu- future development. All the projects, you just heard from Arrow, uh, again, still speaking with FEMA, actually haven't had any requests for additional information for about two weeks, I'm gonna take that as a positive. So I'm hoping that we will see some money committed here in the near future. Uh, last thing from a, from a code's perspective, I did finally, uh, hire an assistant fire marshal. Actually, he's here today, Ryan, Ryan Lewis.
Welcome, Brian.
Welcome.
Uh, Ryan comes to us from, uh.
Oh, Ryan, is it Ryan?
Ryan.
I apologize, I, I said Brian.
Say Brian.
I said Brian, Ryan.
Ryan. Ryan comes to us from, uh, Westchester, he's been involved with the Westchester Fire Department. He's a newly certified Fire One and Fire Two firefighter, um, and he's learning the code stuff as he goes along. He's been with us about three weeks now, two and a half, three weeks, and, you know, it's a busy time, so he's, he's getting a little taste of everything.
Looks like a deer in headlights out there, so.
Yeah, he's doing a good job and, uh, getting acclimated already, so.
Uh, good. Yes, welcome.
From a public work standpoint, the municipal park bathrooms are all open, um, the parks are mulched and maintenance continues. You approved that P S A for Gilmore for that collapsing retaining wall. I did get a rough draft the other day for the temporary shoring, uh, from Gilmore, so hopefully that'll, he'll come to us with a plan that we can put out the bid to get that shoring done, uh, soon. Uh, street sweeping, uh, that's, yeah, that's further down, it is actually on the agenda. But I'll, can I touch base on that now? So, um, I did give you a packet, we, we had difficulty getting three quotes for street sweeping. Uh, we only had two for the longest time, uh, and finally got a third one. And out of those three, um, Phasing Power Sweeping Incorporated, uh, came in at an amount of thirteen thousand zero fifty-six eighty for the twenty twenty-three street sweeping. So there's a request for consideration to have, uh, the board press, president authorize that, that's under the bidding, but we just wanted to bring it up, that's, that was the lowest bidder.
Yeah, they were all pretty much consistent, though, with three bids.
What's that?
I said all three of the bids were like thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, thirteen, fifteen, and eighteen, I think it was, right?
Thirteen, nine, seven, five, and thirteen, seven, fifty.
Yeah. Yeah, and we budgeted, we budgeted seventeen thousand, so we're, you know, we're right where we're supposed to be, so. That's about it, we actually hired, we're, we got two more new, uh, public works labors. Uh, we're still down one, but at least we're, you know, we're almost back to full staff. And lawn maintenance, our lawn maintenance, uh, began on April seventeenth.
Commissioners, any questions for Ray?
No.
I, I did have one question, and, and I know some other folks might be interested, but the U S Supply, you know, now that it's demoed and Kia is taking over that lot, I think everyone would be concerned, are we parking cars there?
Oh, he's not gonna park cars.
Thank you, yes, okay. I wanna make sure that's.
Now, we've, we've made that very clear, um, you know, we've made that very clear that, that, that can't happen. I mean, there, there's no, uh, there's no approved use for that parcel currently. So until a land development or something else is approved, um, there should be nothing except cleaning up of the property.
That's good.
It, it looks good, yeah. But, uh, they, are, you, you said maybe in the future, they're gonna rebuild something on that?
Well, yeah, so, well, I can tell you, 'cause it'll, it'll be on a planning commission agenda soon.
Okay.
So the, the proposal for the development is a automobile leasing facility. So the, the initial plan showed, uh, multiple small wash bays, a small business office, and then parking for leasing vehicles. So what I understand is that'll be their leasing division, just like, uh, uh, Avis Rent-A-Car. They'll have vehicles there for rent, and the, the bays will be for washing detailing and minor, minor maintenance.
Okay. Okay, last thing we need is another parking lot, cars.
I totally agree.
All right. Oh, yes, we have. Yes, Tony?
Yeah, question for Ray, uh, what's the maximum height for a fence in Thorndale?
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet? That's not accurate.
Uh, so the maximum height for a fence is six feet.
Okay. So if a fence is over that height, does the township take action, or is it just a game day call on your part?
Is the fence like three or four feet higher than six feet? Are we talking at ten foot?
It's two to, two to four feet, two to four inches higher. Two to four inches higher.
Two to four inches higher, inches?
Yeah.
Then the answer is no, I'm, I'm not doing anything about that.
Okay, so, so the rule is actually not a rule? It could be six feet, based on the commissioner's comment?
No, it's based on the measurement across the entire length of the fence.
Okay. So if the entire measurement is above six feet, is that a violation?
That would be a violation, that's correct.
Okay. So I provided you information on a measurement I took, which was above that measurement, and you decided to take no action?
That's, that's correct, because I told you it was not over six feet through the entire length of the fence.
I invite you to come out to two oh seven Thornridge Drive and walk the fence with me.
No, thanks.
Because you don't wanna do your job, or because that's not a rule?
Okay, Tony, I, I, I think that's enough, all right? Thank you very much for your comment, if you want, I will come out there and walk with you.
Okay.
And take a look at that fence, okay?
That's fine.
All right, you have my email, thank you, Tony.
I will email you tomorrow.
Ray, thank you so much.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's all right. Where are we here?
Minquess.
Yes, Fire Company, Minquess, uh, Chief Steward, Andrew, welcome.
Evening commissioners, how are you this evening?
How are you doing?
As you saw on my report that was submitted, it was a, another busy month for EMS in Callan Township. Um, I'm happy to report, within the next probably two weeks, you should see two new units driving around the greater Thorndale, Downingtown area. We took delivery of our fifth and sixth transport-capable ambulances, uh, last week. Um, they're in the midst of getting all their updates, their equipment installed, and their supplies put on them, and then they'll go for licensure through the, uh, Count, Chester County EMS Council. Um, on top of that, I'm also happy, and I'm gonna knock on wood before I say this, we are fully staffed.
All right.
Excellent news.
All of our full-time staff.
It's happening everywhere, look at that.
Are, are in place, like I said, I'm gonna knock on wood, because that could change tomorrow. But at this point, we are fully staffed in, uh, both at the full-time and the per diem staffing levels, so we're, we're quite happy in that regard. And that kinda concludes the, the report.
And that makes us happy, you know that.
I know it does. It was Mark's plug last, last month, really helped fill the boat. So, at this point, I'll entertain any questions that, uh, may be up.
Commissioners, any, any questions?
All right. Include the Fire Department again, they.
Okay, yeah, I did wanna say the, the one thing, your report is excellent, really appreciate the breakout on that.
You're welcome, and if there's anything else you would like, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. And we had, uh, Mark DeYoung, was it? Mark?
Hi, everybody, just a quick question for Minquess, um, saw signs today for the, I guess, Arts and Crafts, and it says this Saturday. So is that this Saturday coming up, or going forward, it's like Saturday's gonna be a washout?
Are, are you talking about the Ladies Auxiliary, uh, Craft Fair?
The, the signs were pretty small, so that's about what I gained out of it, was just Arts and Crafts on Saturday.
That is probably the one that is being held this Saturday, it'll actually be, um, it's an indoor fair, it is not an outdoor fair. It'll be at the firehouse on Wallace Avenue.
Well, my wife and mom all love those things, so they'll be there.
Very good, we'll look forward to seeing them.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Andrew?
No.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
And, uh, and if we notice, uh, under Directors' Report, we did not have a golf, um, uh, report, but we do have a special guest here this evening. Uh, Nicole Shannon is our new golf manager for Ingleside. We are so happy to have her here, she's been here for one week and she's stuck it out, she's still here, she showed up for the meeting. So this is a good sign.
Yeah.
Uh, Nicole, if you wanted to come on up and say a few things, if, if you're not, if you're okay.
I am, I've had phenomenal time so far, um, it's been awesome. Um, I have a great team already, um, and I'm excited to hire some more people, I think we have plenty of space. Um, it's just exciting. So, um, if the weather's good to us, uh, we will be in perfect shape for the golf season. And we're already, our numbers are way up, I don't have the exact numbers, but we're, you know, we're month over month, over ten grand revenue, so, um, it's, it's, it's awesome, um, it's exciting, a lot of youth out there, which is great to see as well. So I'm enjoying it, I'm happy to be here, um, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Happy to have you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know in, in the financials, we had a negative, negative amount for March, uh, for the golf, uh, fund, but, uh, I was reassured by Lisa today that we're closer to fifty thousand in, in the black again. So it was just extra expenditures, 'cause Mark DeYoung, I know you were probably looking, or hopefully looking at some of the financials, and, uh, hopefully you weren't too worried about it. But, yeah, we're, we're doing great there, so, thank you. And if you need anything from us, you have our email. All right, and, oh, we do? Okay, yes, Mark?
Just wanna say all, all's good and welcome, Nicole, that's all.
You go, yeah, Mark, Mark is on our golf committee, and you would've met him the other night, yeah. Okay. All right, uh, and under additional business, we had.
Sweeper, for the sweeper.
Yes.
No, they, no, they didn't vote on it, you need to vote to be able to sign that.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't vote on it. I, I did have, I did have a question. Uh, not, not to prolong our night here, uh, but one, a, a part of this bid, uh, they wanted to make sure that But one, a part of this bid, they wanted to make sure that we have dump trucks in place. How does that work?
So two, two different ways. So on the outline, outlying area of the municipality, we have to put dump trucks, position dump trucks so they can unload the sweeper. If not, they would have to drive all the way back to the middle of the, usually they'll dump when they're doing work in the middle of town. They'll dump the, the cinders here at the, the maintenance shop, and then we'll load them and haul them out. On the outliers, then we'll take trucks and set them there. They'll let us know when they're full, we'll send somebody down, we'll go dump them.
Okay.
And that's pretty consistent with every company, that's how every company do, does the bid.
Okay, and also I noticed they would charge you an hourly rate if there's like streets that they can't get to, and we requested them to come back, and that's basically for cars parked?
Yeah, so if you, if you read, some of them spelled out a little better, but basically when they are street sweeping, they will go around cars. So if, if we decide that we don't like that, and we get the cars moving and want them to come back, that's when they'll charge us additional fee. We do not typically do that.
And we notify the residents, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, we try to get a schedule as best possible, and we'll put that schedule out, because depending on the weather, depending on everything, the street sweeper could be here a week or two. So we try to let everybody know based, as well as we can, what community they're gonna be on so people can move and try to get them to move their vehicles.
But this, this contract expires, vote expires at the end of May, so.
Well, yeah, and, and we run in.
They might want to go out after that.
And we run into this every year too. I mean, the first thing we'll do once we send it back to them is, what's the start date? What's the start date? So, you know, we may have to get that amended if they can't give it to, you know, can't give us the service when they say they can. But soon as you get that, we'll send it back. If you choose to sign it, we'll send it back to them and try to get a date.
Lock that price in.
Because the other thing is, we have to get street sweeping done before we can do the line painting. So line, you know, line striping, we have that bid as well. That'll come to you in May, on May eleventh, we finally got the third bid for that. So, but we can't do that until the, till the sweeping stuff.
Okay, yeah, the price expired date, I mean, that's more or less.
It truly does sign the contract, get locked in, yeah.
So, well, well, at that point, if, if we're, we're good to go with this. So Commissioners, any questions on the, the contract for the price? Residents, any questions? Getting our streets swept, cleaned? And they use our water, is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing, oh. We'll have to work with the water provider and designate hydrants that they can, they can fill the truck up, which is, I mean, usually not an issue.
Okay. If there's no questions, no questions from residents? Entertain a motion to authorize the Board President to sign the contract to get our streets swept. A move by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tendaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Josh looks so big right there. Josh, you there? We'll go four zero, just in case. All right, any other additional business? We have a hand raised. Yes, Tom?
Go, Tom Parr, five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue, again. Can I do this under public comments?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. I, I would like to publicly thank Abby for all the work she did this weekend with, with us, out working with the trees and the, and the bushes and the, and every, and the shrubs and the dogs. Also, I'd like to thank Chief Elias and Ray for meeting with us, the Historical Commission at various times concerning the school, the Hexagonal School, and lights, and also Spackman Farm. Lastly, as a fellow member of the Historical Commission, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Mark Evans to being voted onto the Board of Directors of the Chester County Historic Preservation Network. Our township's historic footprint is getting bigger, and it's nice to have a dedicated and familiar voice on the County Board. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you, humbled, thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Lucky to have you.
Thanks, Tom.
All righty.
Any other public comment at this time? Oh. Yeah, we're gonna do in-house. Donna, do you want to come up to the podium?
Good evening. Donna DiPrignio, Historical Commissioner and Treasurer. I just wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing the Historic Commission's request to be on the agenda tonight. And I also wanted to say that I'm happy that, to inform you that the Township Manager, regarding, the Township Manager has notified us that the liability insurance for July twentieth Town Tour is covered under the Township policy. So that's great news. And I just wanted to say, I hope you're excited, Board of Commissioners, as excited as we are for the Historic Town Tour that's gonna be taking place, so thank you.
Thank you. Any attention for our township? And, and Donna, I just wanted to clarify, because I know the emails were going back and forth. CCPC, is that Chester County Planning Commission? Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I don't know if it was outlined or. All right, perfect, thank you. Any other public comment? Oh, we did have one, you said, Tony?
Congrats, Mark, on that nomination, phenomenal.
Thank you, Tony.
I want to say, Ami, Abby is a rock star for your township. I mean, she is a friggin' rock star.
All right.
I had a question about the willows at Valley Run.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the percentage of the units that are gonna be rented at undermarket value. Is that determined by you folks, or is that determined by the developer?
The rent itself for the apartments?
Yeah.
That would be determined by Pennsylvania Housing Authority.
Okay.
And it's not all units have to be under, for low-income people. It would be disabled or low-income. And in Chester County, low income is not what you think low income is. Low income is in the thirty to fifty thousand dollar range.
Okay. So do you, as a board, have a say in what that percentage is, or is that determined by?
No.
You do not?
Yeah, I do recall when they submitted, they had some, a percentage in their plan of how many would be.
It's ten percent, Mark.
It was a very small percent, yeah, there you go, thanks, Josh, that's exactly.
Yeah, I saw some, I saw some notes in the minutes that it was a percentage of the rentals, but was that in writing, or is that just like a?
I believe that was in writing from the Pennsylvania Housing Authority's Assistance Agency.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
I just want to tag on to that, just to note that we, here in Chester County, where we all assume a certain amount of privilege, because many of our income is above a certain level. I have to point out that middle-income housing is not cheap here. And, you know, my, my years in New York, where I was fortunate to buy an apartment, the complex was built for middle-income families, which meant I had thousands of neighbors who were schoolteachers, police officers, firefighters, you know, maintenance workers. I was a letter carrier when I got that apartment. So it's the, you know, Mr. Muller likes to use the term meat and potatoes. It's the meat and potatoes of America. So just want to make sure that we all understand the terminology can, can be twisted sometimes in a way to make it seem unseemly when it's not at all. Would you agree with that, Mr. Thomas? Yes. Yes.
Sustainability.
Yes. Well, I wish you had the microphone.
That was well put, well said. Denise memorizes, she's gonna write it down later. Thank you, Adam. All right, Tony, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Tony, and thank you for the congratulations.
One, one comment I would like to note, Commissioner Evans had asked us at the last meeting if we had a chance to read the annual report that Paul Stevens had put together. So I actually took the time to read it. Very well put together, and it encompassed the entire year, and it's amazing what you guys can get accomplished in, in twelve months' time. So, and I wanted to ask a question for clarification, because I thought it was kind of important. The, one of the things you'd had in there is the ID, you, you were gonna ID Historical Resources Long Lincoln Highway for the adaptive reuse through LERTA.
Yes.
Do, do we have, like, a list?
We have a, a bit of a list. There's a couple of, of addresses that we really can't get the information on. Like the, I think it's, it's the Babies R Us, or whatever that is. That, I believe, was part of the electric farm. You know, we had the first farm to be electrified in, in the area. And, and I believe that that house was attached to it. Wiggins Auto Tags was, that was the first pole house on Lincoln Highway.
There you go, I love this stuff.
Across the street, there's multi. It, it's, it's a, a low, it's a two-floor duplex, but the, the, the west side of it was the, what was the name of the tat? Guthrie'sville Inn, yes.
Really?
And this was eighteen sixty, maybe. And, and, you know, most of Guthrie'sville was torn down, or burned down, or torn down, but that remained. So, yeah, we have things there.
Cool.
So, but, you know, we, we had to really narrow our focus on what we were completing. But there's a few of them in our resources.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing, the P A Share, the annual licensing, because you just renewed it. So what is that?
P A Share is an online tool through SHPO, which allows us to actually upload all the information to get something onto designation of D O A for the National Register. So, for instance, Edges Mill, Milling District, has for years been languishing without anything being done. There was one paper copy sent in, and phone calls made, and phone calls. But this allows us to actually put the whole thing in. We already did, built the map for it in there and started the process of documenting all, you know, all of the things. So I'd say, within ninety days, we will have that district, Milling District, in there and ready to be uploaded for consideration for
National Register.
Designation. And it also allows us to build where our, you know, point out, in there, in a, in a, in their G I S, where our historic properties are. It allows us to put in success stories, all kinds. It's an amazing tool, and it was Paul Stevens who brought that tool to us. He was like, we gotta do this, so.
All right, good, glad I asked. So, so other townships share as well, so they would upload?
Yeah, it's the whole state, yeah.
So, okay. All right, learned something new.
Did I get that right, Abby?
All right, any other public comment at this time? None? Anybody out here? Meeting's going so well, nobody wants to hang? All right, well, if not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
A move, second, third, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you so much, everyone, have a great night.